Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City Council Meeting of Daly City. Today is May 8th, 2017. I'd like to welcome everyone. Would everyone kindly please stand for the Pledge to the Flag?
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If there's any members of the audience who would like to address the council on a particular matter or public comment, please feel free to fill out a card and pass it up to staff. Thank you so much. May I have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Ms. Christensen?
Here.
Mr. Gangona? Mr. Buenaventura?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Present. Thank you so much. All right, the first... Do we have enough seats out there? Is there a lot of folks outside still standing? Do we have to open up the doors, or... Come on in, folks. Invite them in. Be bashful.
There's some seats over here.
Any on the right-hand side. Come on, we won't bite you. Hi, Mary. Yeah, I... Is it possible to open the doors?
Mayor, don't worry about anybody outside.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Chief. All right, thank you. All right, the first order of business. Do we have family members for here present for Felix Tupaz Duag? Any family members? We do have a presentation for Felix. Okay, family members. Felix Tupaz Duag. All right, we'll table this for the next council meeting. All right, next item on the agenda is proclaiming May 2017 as Asian American Pacific Islander Month. And if I can kindly call up Ms. Rowena Poti Meafua, and if you would join me up front. It's raining... I saw rain. Oh, there you... Oh!
You look lovely this evening.
Thank you so much.
Morning, Sylvester. You look fabulous.
And don't you look fabulous.
How are you?
I'm well, how are you?
I'm doing excellent. Okay. Well, Ms. Meafua, May 2017, I would like to make this proclamation in honor of Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And we have about five of the whereas, but I'll read the first one. This month, we celebrate Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and we recognize the achievements and contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders that enrich our nation. And now therefore, I Glenn R. Sylvester, the mayor, and members of the City Council of the City of Daly City, do hereby proclaim May 2017 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and encourage all residents of Daly City to learn more about the Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. I thank you so much. It's a pleasure to present you with this proclamation. Thank you. Thank you. I've known Ms. Meafua for a long time. Long time. And I am so happy that she is still active in the community and at Jefferson High School for our youth. So with that being said, I'd like to turn the mic over to you, Ms. Meafua. It's okay. It's okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Glenn. I am truly, truly grateful. But first, I would like to give all glory and honor to God for this opportunity, for His blessings that He bestowed upon us, and for guiding us here safe and sound. Thank you to our city council members. Thank you to our city manager, Pat Martell. Thank you to Chief Martinez. I know you're in here.
Over here.
Captain Pat Hensley, and the Daly City Police Department. I thank all of you for your support, and as well as in all that they do in supporting Pacific Islands community. I thank all of you. I'm sorry, if I don't put my notes down, I'm gonna forget things.
Take your time.
But to my families and friends, I first would like to acknowledge my father. I think my voice is loud enough. I would like to acknowledge my father, Reverend Elder Isaakapotie, that's been serving the church community here locally in the San Francisco Bay Area for over fifty-some odd years. He likes that. My families and friends that took the time out of their busy schedule to be here to bear witness this acknowledgement. I am a proud Samoan woman, and incredibly honored and grateful for this noble recognition, forgive me, on behalf of Pacific Islanders community in the city of Daly City. Fafta'i, fafta'i, fafta'ilava. I would like to present all of you, if I may, Mayor, with these lays.
Come on up. Come on.
Goes great with my shirt, too.
These lays, a symbol of our gratitude, a recognition for our Pacific Islands community. That being said, I'm a board member of a nonprofit organization called Pacific Islands Together, also known as PIT, based right here in Daly City. We host an annual festival called Shine at Jefferson High School on May 20th. I would like to invite all of you, and all of you, to come out and join us. It's a free community event for all the families to enjoy. I would like to leave you with this. Shine. What does shine means to me? Shine is a perfect word that explains how you feel on a beautiful day. Our motto, "I can shine, you can shine, but together, we can shine brighter." Thank you, and God bless.
Ms. Meafua, thank you so much. And I will be there. May 20th, everyone. Jefferson High School. Oh, yes, comments from the council?
So let me say that, Ms. Meafua, you are Rowena. You've already brought the temperature up here by umpteenth degrees with your warmth and your... And the people that you've brought here. I could just... It feels so much more friendly and comfortable with having people here, and especially the folks that you brought. I want to thank you for just the years of dedicated service you have exhibited throughout your life here in Daly City. You have left an indelible mark here in Daly City with all that you do. I always get emails of your invitations. I'm always in amazement of how you organize and the work effort that you put in, and how you were able to galvanize people. And it's just, it's a wonderful feeling to have here in Daly City and the community. And so I'm grateful for that. And I... And we are blessed to have you as a community servant here. And I'm sure that you will continue to work on behalf of the community. We are a better people for it. And so thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, council member. Oh, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for representing for the Asian American Pacific Islander community, and for being a pillar of connectivity over the years. And as Councilmember Raven Ventura said, definitely we see just how many people are supportive of you in the community, and how you bring community together. And the representation that you bring forth, and how proud each and every one of the community members here to stand about their heritage and share their heritage. And so thank you for that. And also, we look forward to your event Shine, and how you really transfer what culture and community is in Daly City. And so proud to have grown up in such a diverse community with so many Pacific Islanders that have also shown me so much love and community. So thank you for continuing that and being such a pillar and community leader.
And also, again, everyone, thank you so much for being here this evening to witness this. This is a classic example of what Daly City is about. You can look there in the back, and you can see our Pacific Islander police officers as well, talking about the diversity in Daly City. Folks, thank you so much. And officers, thank you so much for being here today. Thank you.
And I'd like to say, it's May, it's all month. It's Asian Pacific Islander Month all month. We should have already been celebrating. We've got a big celebration planned for the 20th. But your task, and my task, is to celebrate every day by learning something new, making a new friend, and keeping the celebration going all month. And in fact, let's do it all year. Thank you so very much.
All right, next item on the agenda. This past weekend, we celebrated International Firefighters Day. All too often, so many things... We do so many things in our lives, but we tend to forget some of those small things. But being a firefighter is also very important, and it means a lot to our city. If I can have the pleasure of calling up Ms. Pamela D. Giovanni. Come on up, Pam. Come on, don't be shy. Come on up to... The reason why I'm having Pam come up is because to give this proclamation is very important, and I'm sure it'd be important to Pam as well. She's a community advocate in Daly City. She's one of our planning commissioners. And she's also the daughter of a firefighter. So Ms. Pamela D. Giovanni and Ms. Christine Fuller.
Yes, sir.
Why don't you come up and join Pam as a fellow EMT, because you know what fire does? And would you kindly present the both of you this proclamation to our fire department?
And if the other firefighters would like to come up that are here tonight, that can be here? Good evening. My name is Pamela D. Giovanni. And this past week, we had International Firefighters Day. And so often, we don't realize that our firefighters, they only have fifteen per day currently. And our Engine 95, one of the engines is shut down, and they are strained beyond belief, but never complain. They're always here for us, and we need to be there for them. So tonight, it's just a small token to recognize them. And many of them also are Asian Pacific Islanders, I might point out. And so we have a two-for-one tonight. And so I would like to read a couple whereas clauses in honor also of my father, who was a firefighter back east, and it stays with you. And then we'll have Ronnie Goose speak. Whereas, International Firefighters Day was established in 1999 to remember those firefighters worldwide lost in the line of duty protecting the safety of us all. And whereas, the role of a firefighter in today's society, be it urban, rural, wild, and volunteer, career, industrial, Defense Force, aviation, motorsport, or other, is one of the dedication, commitment, and sacrifice, no matter what country, where they reside, and work. International Firefighters Day recognizes those firefighters who have served their communities for most of their lives, and those who have served for just a few short years, and those that have passed on. Hailing from all walks of life, they are our mothers, fathers, brothers, sisters, aunts, uncles, grandparents, neighbors, and friends. Firefighters protect us without wanting recognition, always, or reward. In our time of need, they are there with courage, compassion, and loyalty. Now therefore, Mayor Glenn R. Sylvester and members of our city council do hereby proclaim May 4th, 2017 as International Firefighters Day. Encourage all citizens to recognize not only our local firefighters, but those worldwide on May 4th, and year-round, for their courage, selfless service, and sacrifice. So if you'll join me in honoring and recognizing our Daly City firefighters by either applauding or standing up for their service. Ronnie Goose, he's on the spot. Congratulations. Take the mic.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Greg.
Thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you for this proclamation and for the donuts.
No, you wasn't supposed to tell them about that.
Each firehouse in Daly City got two dozen donuts. They were... Yes. I ate five of them. Over two days, though. We really appreciate the thought. Up until now, May the 4th was like Star Wars Day. This really means a lot to us. Yeah, we work every day for you, the citizens of Daly City. You know, we come in, and we try to do our best. And even though, like, some years may be harder than others as far as, like, you know, support-wise or whatever, we keep coming in, and we keep fighting. And we always will. Every day, we come in, we take a lot of pride in Daly City, and we'll always be there for you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys and gals. Thank you so much. Oh, 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 wait, wait, wait. Got a comment.
Let me just say something real quick. So Ronnie, I wanted to say to you and to all the firemen and firewomen of the Daly City Fire, the message we sent with the donuts was, we wanted to make sure you knew that we weren't gonna forget you. And with all that's been happening, especially with the shutdown of Engine 95, we are not gonna forget. And so that was the purpose behind it. Not because we thought you needed more donuts. But so I hope, you know, you all understand, and I hope the community understands, that we are always gonna remember. We have that in mind when we make our decisions, and we're not gonna forget. That's what I wanted to make crystal clear. So thank you for all that you do for Daly City. We know that you have been very active in the calls that you have gotten. We admire your heroism and all the things that you've done to save and help our people. And we just can't thank you enough. So thank you.
Thank you.
I also wanted to say thank you to each and every one of you for really, really giving so much care to the Daly City community. And I've heard a lot from residents, how much you've done for them, and how much, when there is that emergency call, they really appreciate each and every one of you. And I've heard that firsthand, and actually have seen you guys out there firsthand as well. So thank you so much for all that you do, and we are very grateful for each and every one of you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you. Yes, Ronnie?
Thank you.
Go back to work, Ronnie.
And finish off the donuts.
All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Now we're gonna go on with the rest of the council meeting. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for April 24th.
Move to approve.
Second.
First, second. Further discussion? Minutes have been approved.
Don't we have to vote?
Voice vote? Okay, voice vote, please, on the approval of the minute. We have a first and a second. No further discussion. Voice vote, please.
I need to abstain because I was not present at that meeting.
Noted.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much. Okay, the minutes have been approved. All right, next item is the approval of the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
We have first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The agenda is approved. Next item is the consent agenda. As to the items on the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
We have a first.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, consent agenda is approved. Moving on to item number seven, public hearing, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, Local Storm Water Program Regulatory Fee. And we have staff. Welcome. Good evening, Mr. Fuller. You have the floor, sir.
Can we have them close the door over there? In the back? Could you close the door? Yeah, great, thanks.
Okay, number seven.
We want to encourage frivolity in the rotunda.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you tonight is the public hearing for the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, better known as NPDES, permit. Daly City is part of a regional permit issued by the San Francisco Regional Water Quality Control Board. This permit mandates municipal storm water management activities that the city is required to do. This is a permit that has been in place for many years. They do update it every so often. This latest update was done in 2015, and it's good for five years. In order to cover these costs that's associated with the storm water management activities, in 1995, the city approved an ordinance, number 1219, that basically established a storm water fee that would be charged to property owners of Daly City. The table below in the staff report does indicate the fees and how they're charged. Those fees have been in effect for more than 20 years, and they have not changed. Staff estimates that this coming fiscal year, the program cost is slightly under half a million dollars. And the anticipated fees to be collected is approximately $460,000. This is a fee that is charged to property owners every year. It's collected through the property tax roll. And upon approval, staff will prepare the documents for the county tax collector's office for collection through the property tax roll. Again, this fee does... This fee does help us cover the cost of the regulatory mandates as required by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions of mayor or council members.
All right, thank you so much. Are there any questions from council?
Before you vote, Mayor Glenn Sylvester?
Yes.
I'd just like to point out that what you may not have noticed in Mr. Chu's presentation was that the fee that we're collecting does not cover 100% of the cost of the program. And in fact, the fee is really being utilized just to do storm drain cleaning, catchpiece and cleaning, and street sweeping. And it can't... The fee we're collecting is not completely covering those three elements of the program. In addition to that, there are many other elements to the NPDES program that are being implemented by the Community Development Department, by the Department of Water, Wastewater Resources. And it is probably going to be necessary in coming years to raise this fee. This fee hasn't been raised in 20 years. And it's only... It's less than $10 a parcel for a single-family house. And I think it's important for the council to understand that each time they issue one of these MRP's, there's a whole trainload of new requirements that didn't exist in the last permit. And we don't have an unlimited capacity of money to take on these new costs. And so I would be recommending to the city manager that we consider reevaluating this fee and potentially increasing it next year.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Any other further comments? Anyone? Vice Mayor? Council members?
Yep.
Okay. We don't have any cards on this item, so... Okay, let's open... I'd like to open to the public hearing at this time. And we don't... Any... Okay, we don't have any cards. Okay, we gotta follow the right way. So... Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Okay, we have first and second to close. The public hearing has been closed. Okay, we...
Don't we have to vote on that?
I'm sorry? Okay, this... Yeah, it's a resolu... Yes. So to adopt the resolution as stated...
No, no, I think she meant that you need to...
Oh, we did close the public hearing. So now we'll... All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, I'll accept the motion to adopt the resolution as noted.
I move to adopt the resolution.
Okay. We... Vice Mayor had made mention earlier, so Ms. Christensen, I guess you're second?
I would be happy with a second.
Thank you so much. Roll call, please. We'll get this.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Okay, the resolution passes. Thank you so much. All right. Moving on to item number eight, approval of benefit assessments for Linda Vista area for fiscal year 2017-18. And Mr. Chu, you have the floor again.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. This item, again, is also a public hearing for the approval of the Benefit Assessment District for the Linda Vista area for the fiscal year 2017-18. Back in 1990, city council passed Resolution 90-55 that established the Linda Vista Benefit Assessment District. The district basically consisted of two drainage basins, the Linda Vista Basin and the Bay Ridge Basin. These two basins was required as a result of a subdivision that occurred back in the late '80s. And it basically required the development to store the additional drainage above and beyond what was draining off the site prior to the... beyond what was draining off the site prior to the development. And so, the Bay Ridge Drainage Area basically consists of servicing 177 lots and the Linda Vista area serves 176 lots. These drainage basins require additional services and maintenance above and beyond what the city normally provides in regards to storm drain maintenance. The maintenance staff does evaluate these two drainage basins on a quarterly basis and they prepare reports in terms of items that may need to be repaired as a result of the quarterly inspections. The fees for the Linda Vista area is $151.13 and for the Bay Ridge Basin, it's $100.46. Staff is proposing to keep those fees similar to what it was in 2016 and 17, so there's no proposed change in the fee. The total amount generated would be approximately $44,000. And again, this is also collected through the county tax collector's office on the property tax rolls. And so, upon approval, staff would work in terms of preparing the documents for the county collector's office in terms of being able to collect it on the property tax roll. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions of the mayor and council members.
Thank you, Mr. Chu. Any questions amongst the council members? I do have one. Any particular reason why they're paying different amounts? I see 146 for the Bay Ridge as opposed to 151.
So, basically, it's the size of the basins are different size and so, the cost required to maintain it is slightly different.
Yes, Mr.
Mayor Sylvester, that, it's also the, about half of the money that's collected each year is put into a reserve fund to repair and/or replace, or not repair, but let's say completely rehabilitate or replace any of the facilities. For example, if for some reason, all the landscaping died or guts overgrown or the irrigation system at the, at the Linda Vista Basin needed to be completely redone, this reserve fund could be utilized for that. So, about half of the money is for the reserve fund that is collected. It's actually even more than that, of all the annual assessments collected, more than half of it goes to the reserve fund for future long-term maintenance of the site. And so, basically, as Mr. Chu said, one of the sites is just two or three times bigger. So, it takes a little more to maintain it and there's more potential for a long-term cost to repair it.
And I imagine with all this rain, there's a lot of, lot more growth this year than in the past. Have you, more mowing or not?
No, it's not really that so much. It's pretty much ongoing maintenance. Our maintenance cost for the basins really is pretty consistent, that's why we're able to keep the assessments flat. And, but the day will come when things like the irrigation system in the, in the open park on Linda Vista Basin may have to be modified or replaced because it doesn't last forever. Or we may even want to have to replant some of the landscaping if bushes die and that kind of thing. There's also, the, the Bay Ridge Basin is actually supported by a retaining wall, which would be very costly if for some reason that wall failed. And that's another thing that could be a long-term cost to this, these two districts.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Are there any other questions from the council? Okay, this time I'd like to open to public hearing at this time. And I do have a card on this item, and if I can have Ms. Phyllis Rizzi come on up. Hello, Ms. Rizzi, how are you?
Honorable Mayor and Council, I'm addressing this basically to Mr. Fuller because we have discussions about this year after year after year. And I just wanted to bring it forth to the council regarding the new, the changeover in the area as the Robertson School no longer will exist and the new housing will go into that area, in abutting that property. I just wanted to ask a couple of things regarding the property. First of all, I want to say that the city does a beautiful job of taking care of that. It's very much like a park. And they've listened to us year after year after year and have been very open to dialogue from the residents of both Bay Ridge and Linda Vista as far as keeping it a nice piece of property and it is a very nice introduction to Daily City from that neighborhood, especially where it connects with Brisbane and Brisbane does not care for their side of the property. So, we thank this, we thank the city and we know that this is why we need to contribute to that. And Mr. Fuller has also told us about the sinking fund and how we need to have reserves for this. So, it's all acceptable. I just wanted to get an idea, a couple of questions coming up regarding the change in the neighborhood and the abutment to, of, of the retention basin with the new housing to come in the, in the Robertson property. And also, the access road that will go in from Linda Vista Drive will probably cut right through the detention, the retention basin, is that correct?
The new proposed road that cuts through to Linda Vista from Martin Street is, actually, the Linda Vista site has two basins and it, that, that road will cut through on the flat area between the two basins. So, it won't actually affect the basins, or if it does, it'll only affect it just on the slope of one side or the other, but not really affect its capacity, it can't. The developer, when he puts the road through, would have to ensure that the capacity of the two basins remain. But it will remove a small, not an insignificant part of the site from actual landscape maintenance, for example, and, and by replacing it with a road.
Well, the other question was also, is it expected then that the houses that are built there will be contributing to, or, or be accessing that basin as well, so they'd be part of the basin area?
No, they, they would have to drain directly into those basins. And it's not, the, the proposal at this time is not that they would be draining through those basins. If they did, they would have to be assessed to help maintain them. But they're, they're not proposing that at this time. Different developments nowadays have to do other, many other things to mitigate their drainage, like putting in bio swales and other features which the development that the Robertson School site is going to do, which would probably do the same kind of mitigation as your detention basins would do, that were put in for the Linda Vista and Bay Ridge basins.
Thank you very much, I just wanted to get some perspective.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi. We don't have any further cards on this matter, request a motion to close the public hearing at this time?
So moved.
Second?
First and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, to request a motion to adopt the resolution for the approval of benefit assessments for Linda Vista area for the fiscal year 2017-18.
So moved.
Second?
First and a second. Roll call please.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Resolution passed, thank you so much, Mr. Fuller and Mr. Chu. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of investment strategy and funding for the public agency's post-employment benefits section 115 trust program to pre-fund pension and other post-employment benefits. And we do have staff, city manager Ms. Martel and Mr. Lawrence Chu. Thank you.
Good evening council. At a council meeting in April 2017, the council adopted resolution and authorized staff to participate in the session 115 trust program administered by PAST. The next step is to select an investment portfolio as to how funds will be invested. The investment manager for the past session 150 trust program is Highland Capital Management. The past Highland, the past Highmark Capital Management over five investment portfolio, they are the capital appreciation, balanced portfolio, moderate portfolio, moderate conservative portfolio, and the conservative portfolio. And each investment portfolio has different risk profile with different amount invested in equities, fixed income, and cash. The investment portfolio range from capital appreciation with over 75% of funds invested in equities, to conservative with 15% of funds invested in equities. On the page two of the staff report, you can see different type of investment portfolio, the investment objective, and the equity fixed income and the cash. In addition, the city council needs to determine whether the session 150 trust fund will be actively managed or passive managed. With active management, it euthanized mutual fund while passive management invest in exchange trade funds or the index fund. Active manager can eliminate certain portion of the market and while passive manager will mirror the overall market. And in the staff report, page three, we also list out the, the actively managed and passive managed the investment return for the one-year, three-year, and five-year return. Because CalPERS invests in a risky side with over 60% in the, 60% of the asset allocation in global and private equity, the moderate conservative strategies and passively managed approach is most appropriate to the city when we consider both the risk and return on investment. The investment objective of the moderate conservative portfolio is to provide current income and moderate capital appreciation. The major portion of the assets are invested in income-producing securities. Approximately 85% of the public utility participating in CalPERS, they select the moderate conservative portfolio. In this portfolio, approximately 30% invest in equity, 65% invest in fixed income, and 5% invest in cash. Staff recommend the city council adopt the moderate conservative investment strategies with a passively managed approach for the city investment portfolio and authorize a transfer of excess revenue of up to $1 million as part of the year-end closing process for the current fiscal year 2017 to fund the session 115 trust program. And this conclude my presentation.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I do.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
So, in your report, you said 85% of public agencies participating, approximately 85% of them have selected the moderately conservative strategy. But just in gaining, how many in total of public agencies, do we have this information, have joined? Like, in total, like how many?
That are part of the PARs program?
Yeah.
There's quite a few, we, actually, it was in some of the documentation we presented earlier, but...
There's over almost, there's over 60 cities and cities participate in the past program and they are overnight a hundred special district. And for the county, there's around 100 counties, it's in one of the attachment to the council that we provide in March.
Thank you.
When the, when the council approved the program, we listed all the cities that were part of it.
Thank you.
I have a question. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes.
I think I made mention of this at the last meeting on this issue. I, I had inquired about if there were certain companies that we had disagreed with in terms of not being socially responsible, how much, I understand we have the, the passive and the, what's the other term?
Active.
Active, yeah. So, how much control do we have when, if we decide to engage in that sort of debate with respect to the companies we disagree with philosophically on how they're?
And I have Andrew Brown, he's from the Highmark Capital Management. He's the, what, senior portfolio manager.
Good evening and thank you for having me, festive, festive night.
Yeah.
Yeah, my name's Andrew Brown, I'm a senior portfolio manager with Highmark Capital. Highmark is a subsidiary of Union Bank. And I've been the lead portfolio manager within Highmark, working with PARs clients. Previous question, I think we're up to about 75 clients in the pension pre-funding program. And so, I'm here to answer any questions you might have. And I think you're, you're, you asked a question about social responsible investing and whatnot. And within our platform, we have two, two frameworks. One is using actively managed mutual funds, one is using index funds. On the mutual fund side, it, it is difficult for us, it's impossible for us to say, hey, dodging cocks, don't buy Exxon, don't buy Chevron, don't buy Bechtel, don't buy whatever company. Conversely, with the index funds, they invest in all the companies within the underlying index. So, if you're invested in the S&amp;P 500, you get all 500 constituents. So, so in, in that regard, it's, it's tough to really represent a, a social angle to, to investing in this, in this program. So, as, as fiduciaries, and this maybe more narrowly answers your question, as fiduciaries, we, we don't, we don't allow any social investing or anything along those lines. It's all, it's all in the interest of, of, you know, plan participants and, and the goals and the objectives of the plan.
Okay. What if, let's say we were to select a fund that, okay, so maybe out of the 20 or something companies in the fund, there's a couple that we disagree with and we would like to, is there a way to get out of that fund without incurring some kind of penalties or, walk me through the process of that, if that scenario should ever happen?
Sure, so, so I'll go bigger picture and then answer your question directly. Within the index-based platform, passively managed platform, which is what staff recommended, we invest in roughly about nine index funds. And so, within that, and as I said a second ago, one of the index funds is the S&amp;P 500. And, and there's, there's just no way that we can invest in that S&amp;P 500 index and back out maybe one specific sector like energy, if, if that was troubling. Or, or defense names, or if there were certain healthcare stocks that maybe council had a negative feel towards. It, it's just hard to, well, it's impossible to, to back that out.
To add to that, council member, the same is true with PERS. I mean, CalPERS invests in similar kinds of funds, although they do invest in individual equities. So, in that respect, if you were actively managing it and you could specifically select individual equities that you wanted or didn't want, or, you know, then you would be able to do that. But by passively investing in it, you're taking all of it together. And so, it's really not possible to do that. And so, and we, but we have the same thing happen with CalPERS investments. Because if they're investing in, in index funds, then that could include companies that we might not want to be investing in. I know that, I'm a member of Calstirs and they invest very much the same way. And a lot of teachers had concerns and it became clear that we should, if we're passionate about a certain social justice issue, that we invest our personal monies and control where they go. But because the diversity of opinion in the large group of employees that were in that group, there was no way that there could be any consensus among all the residents of Daily City about which fund would be socially acceptable, which one would not be. And, and so, to have our general money go into a general passive investment fund and that our personal money, or any money that we would control as a business personally, that would be the place where we could express our social justice concerns.
In my 19 years working for Highmark, I would completely echo what you just said. I have maybe about a half a dozen clients on the private client side where I manage their personal assets. And if you asked each one of those to, to list the line items that are important to them?
Totally different.
A little bit different, and there might be some commonalities, but... There might be some commonalities, but yeah, a bit different.
And, and we are investing up to a million for this first round. And from what we were told before, there's always the, the option of reassessing how much we want to put in and how we want to manage it in the future. It can change.
Absolutely. We do not limit any of our clients to change their investment objectives. You can switch.
So at the end of the year or two years, we could evaluate and see how we feel about it and, and then have an option to move to a more active investment if we wanted to or, I frankly, quite frankly, I'm pretty bright, but there's no way I'd have the knowledge to make a sound investment on behalf of all the citizens. I might risk my own money, but I'm not risking their money. That wouldn't be right.
And, and you know, that sentiment is echoed, I think, from other public agencies that are part of this program. And so that's why a majority of them are more conservative in the, in the funds that they invest in, at the conservative or moderately conservative level and why they are passively managed.
Well, especially after we all.
Much lower risk. There's much lower risk with passively managed.
If I may, I, excuse me, I think there's a distinct, distinction here between residents and employees. This fund is to benefit the employees and not the residents. So as such, excuse me.
Really?
As such, I feel that the employee should have a say also in this matter and that city council should not be speaking for the employees. Now, what I've heard so far is passively managed and how difficult it is to break apart certain specific areas. But we didn't hear anything about actively managed, which I see over a five-year period is only a difference of four basis points, three-year period, three basis points and four basis points over a, over a one year. So it's really not that much of a difference, but actively managed to have more control. Is that possible?
First of all, Mayor, let me clarify once again that these, these are not employee funds. These funds represent the employer's contribution. So we are not investing employees' funds. We are investing the employer contribution portion that goes towards pensions.
Thank you, Ms. Martell. And who would be the benefit of these pension, pensions?
Ultimately, the employees benefit from the pension, but it is not their funds that we are investing.
It is the, so it's the investment of the community in paying our share into the retirement funds. So it really is a community contribution honoring our employees. And so all of the community would want to be involved in that. And then the employee groups can choose how they do. I mean, they're CalPERS. That's how they are.
So I didn't get an answer on the actively managed versus, versus passively managed. If you were to choose actively managed, do we have more control as to where the investments should go?
No, Mr. Mayor, there wouldn't be any necessarily distinction or ability to ask the, in terms of the active platform where, let's just say, I think it's about eighteen mutual funds right now. We couldn't tell the Dodge and Cox manager, hey, we have the city, Daly City's retirement money, they want it in these stocks, but they don't want it in these stocks. We wouldn't be able to affect that, that with the mutual funds that we would be investing in on that, on that side, unfortunately.
So what are the pros and cons between them both, active versus passive?
Sure.
Other than one gives a better rate, a few basis points?
Well, so one would be fees and expenses.
Ah, good.
So within the moderately conservative platform, the passive side, if you took an average of our current platform, it would be point one one percent. So eleven basis points on the, on the passive platform. If you took an average of the mutual funds, it would be about point five five, point five four. There's about a, almost a forty basis point difference between active and passive, passive being less expensive. So that'd be the con. The pro in, you know, past performance is, I was supposed to say this, past performance is no guarantee of future returns.
Guarantee of future.
Thank you. Sing it together. Over the last ten years, the record, at least our record for active is about a forty basis point outperformance factoring in the fees. So, so we certainly have earned our keep slightly. However, as staff pointed out, it is true, most clients have selected in this, in this program moderately conservative passive because point, I think the main reason is because point one one is, is pretty inexpensive. It's not nothing, but it's pretty inexpensive.
In addition, it represents a lower level of risk. And we're trying to ensure that taxpayer dollars that are invested in this manner for, to meet our future debt obligations are being done in a way that we are minimizing the risk and yet getting a reasonable return on our investment.
And I would just add to that, that I think the main driver though of risk is how much you have allocated to stocks. And so with moderately conservative, whether it's active or passive, twenty to forty percent is the range. Right now, we're right in the middle at thirty percent. So that I would say would be the main driver. So certainly staff has not nominated something that looks like CalPERS's investment objective of sixty, seventy percent of equities.
Thank you. Any other further questions? All right. Thank you so much, sir. So at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
So move.
We have first and second. Any further discussion before we take a roll call? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes, and I wanted to say I'm glad we're going with a moderately conservative approach and a less risky one to make sure that our tax dollars are protected.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
All right, resolution pass. Item number ten, ordinances. This is the second reading on ordinance number fourteen thirteen regarding the amending plan development standards for plan development PD dash fifty-eight B. And, oh, Madam City Attorney Zimmerman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item became before the city council as an introduction of the ordinance fourteen thirteen. This is the second reading for adoption this evening.
All right, I remember that.
Motion for adoption.
So making a vice mayor motion, second by council member Christensen. Any further questions or concerns on this ordinance? All right, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, next item is public appearances and oral communications. I have one card. Ms. Pamela D G Ovani, looks like we got another one. Thank you. Pam?
Yes, good evening, Council Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. I just want to bring to your attention, not just because we honored our firefighters tonight, but actually the seriousness of it is that our firefighters, there are three particular facts that I know of that a neighbor told me, called me to tell me that our firefighters were dispatched to the wrong addresses at three different occasions. When actually, one of the ladies actually witnessed the firefighter looking for the address that they had dispatched them to the wrong address. So that would have been engine ninety-three over in the Bay Shore area. That's one. Secondly, that we all know that even, we don't want to forget our police officers, even though we're honoring our firefighters today, that we still only have six officers for those at home and here in the audience, for every, I think and believe for every thousand people. We are building, which is great, our economic development, but it increases on them as well. And we know the seriousness of, like with our ninety-five especially, they don't just go out for fires, people, they go out for heart attacks, injuries, rescues, and they're the ones, when I say there's fifteen in our city, they're the ones that go to Pacifica and dispatch to Brisbane because Pacifica and Brisbane, although they will help us North County Fire, they do not have the means over in those particular areas. So we all work together. But it's, it's something that's really of a serious note. My father had eight heart attacks, three strokes, and as a firefighter's daughter, and not just because that, but this is our community, that I, it's something that foremost, that in this city, Daly City, I know we can do it. I know we can do better by them and they never complained, but it's putting a big strain. Think about the strain on their health when they go out to all these fires. And their pay is like one of the lowest and they can't compete, especially our police officers who cannot compete at the salaries that they have. People are leaving to go to the county sheriffs who make twenty percent more. And I know that from Carlos Polanos. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. D, D G Ovani. All right, we have a few more cards here. We'll start off with, is it Mamie Zoo? Good evening, Mamie.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm here to speak for Franciscan Park problem. So the rent always increase and then the transfers not go through, all the way has some problem. So all the peoples behind me, they are old, they only getting like under thousand dollars every month, but they have to pay like over twelve thousands dollars every month. So I don't know how can they support it to living in the park. So we would like to ask you guys to help and prove the transfer and support us. So we support you guys and please support us. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mamie. Okay, Mr. David Medrano. And after Mr. Medrano, we have a Rolando V Tabalno. Rolando? Hi, sir, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor.
Yes.
From the city council. I was kind of just like reading state and what she said, I got a couple of, me and my family, last time I talked to you, I told you about my mom, you know, she, she never got the assistance, just like these people, and this is years ago, so it's an ongoing and it never stops. And so something has to be done. We have a lady in there now who lost her husband recently and she has to make a new lease because she lost her husband. Now, when they make the new lease, they're going to raise her eleven percent, they want to raise her rent eleven percent just because she lost her husband. And, you know, the rent increase they're trying to put on us now is everybody else across the board is three percent. Now, just because she lost her husband or whatever, now they're going to, just because she's making a new lease, now it's eleven percent. You know, so that's why, you know, this thing with Link Housing, they're, in my opinion and many others, it's they're less than honorable, less than honest. So when the transfer of the park happens, they need to be not involved. The best thing for this community is to have them, when it happens, not involved anymore. And, you know, personally, to go a step further, I know it's way down the line, but, so you don't get more victims in the future, I think they should be prosecuted. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Rolando. What's your last name, sir?
Tabalno, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Good evening, City Mayor and good evening, City councils. I'm here tonight to just represent, you know, some of the park member, Franciscan Park. And this is regarding a lot of large homes that we noticed now that keeps on coming in. And we are so concerned for some of the families that are really interested to live in the park. And they're trying to come up and get qualified as a low income family. But it look likes, you know, if you don't have, you know, this kind of amount of money to get into, you know, it's, they've been turned down. And we are so concerned about it, Mayor, you know, and we need some help also from the city. We keep on hearing that, you know, it's transferring of management is supposed to be, you know, it's done by now, but until now, you know, with, with the help of the Superior Court, we're supposed to get a new management, you know, from Franciscan, which is until now, you know, all these family members, I myself, you know, it's so concerned about our situation. We received, you know, rent increase that's going to be in effect in this coming June. And I, I'm port here, lives in Franciscan as a low income family, but, you know, it's, this is my port increase, again, that, you know, we are so concerned about almost every year, you know, it's, we're getting a rent increase. That's why we need help from the city and help us, please, you know.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Bill Stepinovich.
Stepinovich.
Did I say it right?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Hi, Bill.
Hi. I did some research into some recent announcement by the CBR Real Estate Group and some of the parties that were involved in this two hundred six unit at Brunswick are involved with Link. They've perpetrated all this, they're in the affordable housing industry where they make all this profit and the one, one person is, the interesting thing about the Brunswick apartment, I found the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee State Report, it's a five-page thing dated December fourteenth, the same day that this council approved this project. Now, this Caleb Rope is the contact person for this two million, two million eight hundred eighty, three hundred forty-one million dollar federal tax credit request for this project. But his office is in Idaho and he's done a lot of transactions for Link Housing. And he also, the company he's with is the Pacific Group and Pacific West Communities is one of the nine, one of the affiliate committee companies. What is also interesting, the management agent is the U.S. Residential Group LLC, which is, runs, which is up at Franciscan, which the manager is, works for, which released two hundred forty thousand gallons of water, or over two hundred thousand gallons of water, six times resulting in a fee on our property tax. It's a recurring fee and it's, it's just an injustice against the residents of Franciscan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, next card is Mr. Sonny Kenny Kenny.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Good evening, Chief. I have a card for Sin Thompson, one of our directors of the board. Unfortunately, she is sick tonight and she had asked me to speak for her, which I would beg you to grant me, Mayor and council members. Two minutes, if I may, for Sin Thompson.
Sure, okay. Once you pass up your card, Mr. Sonny.
Actually, what?
Pass up your card and you can talk. Please, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, go ahead, Sonny.
The message that Sin Thompson wants to relay here actually ties in with what Bill had stated on the continuing corruption that Link Housing and Pacific West had been actively performing at the park. This includes the rent increase, which they adopted, Link Housing adopted a rent increase without any vote from our board. Sin Thompson considers this an insult and I personally and the park agrees that this is an insult that Link Housing is throwing to our face. And I beg, but. And I beg, but although you say that you have no relationship at all with any rent increase, please consider the fact that Betsy sits at the FHC Board, where she votes on any rent increase. And therefore, the city should get over and discuss with Link why they changed the process on a rent increase. And Sin Thompson wants a justification on this rent increase. For one thing, the property tax had increased four times from two hundred thousand in two thousand eleven into six hundred thousand this year. And they refuse to explain this. It's a crime. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to speak for Sin. Now, I'll continue on with my, uh, part. Thank you, Council. Here's the Franciscan Park, an affordable housing community, which we all should be proud of. Since two thousand two, we declared it will be an affordable housing community. Unfortunately, with what Link Housing and management are doing, under your very nose, this is what's going on. There are more rich people coming in, and there are more poor people going out. I mentioned this the last time I was here. They fired Samira Larson, who stated this in our meeting, which is great. The problem that we have with this is, what are you folks doing? But Attorney Zimmerman, there is a legal issue here, because this clearly violates the provision that Franciscan Park needs to provide twenty percent of its population to the low-income residents that we have, and ten percent of the very law. This is still going on today, as what our residents have stated. Large homes are coming in. We have residents here who should be receiving these low-income benefits. Since two thousand two, they've been in line at the management office. A council member had agreed with me right here, that ne, there never was any affordable housing program at the Franciscan Park anyway. So, whatever you folks say that there is compliance is totally a lie. The question is, what are you folks going to do about this crime? Nothing had been done. I discussed this the last time. They fired their employee who said this. Did you folks even investigate whether this is true, or, and it's going on? And they laugh about this. That person was smiling when she said this. Your responsibility is monitoring that there is compliance. This non-compliance. Mayor, we place on your shoulder, the next step that we have to do into the second study session, to discuss this, the transfer of ownership, which is going on through our lawyer, and I hope Attorney Zimmerman had received the package of documents. We need to find out what you require from us, so that we can transfer the ownership and get rid of Link. And management is causing this abuse to our low-income population. This needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny Kenny. Are there any other cards from the audience this evening? All right. Are there any appointments from any council member? Our next session, session will be on reports. We'll start on council committee reports. Vice, oh, Vice Mayor, would you like to proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do have, um, we have not met recently on the two thousand one Plaza, but I do want to say that, um, it's great that ABS-CBN is there. But I also would like to know if we are gonna have an update on, um, the parcel that's out for RFP in regards to, um, a potential hotels. And how many, um, did we receive?
We will have a full report to the council at a later date. We're still working with our consultants to analyze, uh, the qualifications that have been submitted. Um, we don't have specific proposals. This was an RFQ, a request for qualifications. Uh, and so, we're reviewing all of that material, and we will be coming to the council with a full report about that.
Thank you, Ms. Martel. When is the anticipated date of that, please?
I can't give you that date. I assume that it's gonna be within the next two to three weeks.
Okay? Any, anything else? Well, I kind of printed mine up, now I can't find it, so I'm looking for it on my computer. And, uh, give me a moment, and, uh, okay. Council committee only have one. On the twenty-eighth of last month, I attended the City Council's Dinner Meeting in Redwood City. There, uh, they talked about the history of Daly City. I want to acknowledge Redwood City for their one-hundredth and fiftieth-year anniversary, to which Daly City provided a proclamation, and I saw various proclamations from various cities. So, that's all I have for council committee. Anyone else for council committee? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to city council comments. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, so, I just wanted to, um, let everyone know, on April twenty-seventh, I attended the Daly City Youth Health Center Spring for Youth Event, and it was definitely well-attended, and it was such a great organization that, um, is continually providing services for our youth and young people. I remember, uh, being a Jefferson High School student and utilizing their services. I'm very happy that they are still continuing to do so. Um, there was a young person that spoke around her experience, and how she wanted to now give back to the organization, and I think that, um, that was truly inspiring. Um, and I know that they're gonna be moving across from City Hall in the near future. Also, on May fifth, um, I attended the Peninsula Family YMCA, Everyday Heroes Award, and heard stories from firsthand young people. I think it's so important for us to continue to develop our young people. They are our future. And it was also great to see their eagerness to give back, um, and also start, um, working for the organization, whether it was through their, um, youth camp experience, whether it was becoming another mentor to another youth that, you know, may, may have some issues that they, they want to talk about. I mean, um, they were really brave young people that talked about their own experiences around, um, needing, you know, mental health services, and hoping that, you know, that, that would expand, and that other young people could utilize it. And also, on May fifth, um, with the Daly City Coma Chamber of Commerce, Sephora, if many of you know Sephora, expanded in J.C. Penney's in Ceremone, and they doubled their square footage in size, and it is the first store in Northern California to have this transformation. The line went all around the building.
Vice Mayor, any other comments or anything else?
That, that's it.
You sure?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I had to ask, because we have some duplication here, so I'll try to be short with mine as well. On the twenty-seventh, I attended an event called Spring for Youth, and you see the Vice Mayor nodding her head. Uh, we both attended together. I'd like to congratulate Melissa Ambrose for the Carol Forrest Award, and Geraldine Mack for the Jan Hippie Memorial Service Award. As you all may well know, the Daly City Youth Health Center provides services for our youth to include training, resources, and ongoing information about health and being, and we definitely support that group. On the twenty-ninth, you remember from the last council meeting, we had representatives here from San Bruno Relay for Life. That happened on the twenty-ninth. Daly City partnered with San Bruno, South San Francisco, and San Bruno, of course, and, uh, um, council member, I believe it was Ken Abara who was here. Well, I took a picture with him, and he was wearing a tutu. So, I, uh, he kind of looked at me, and I says, "Well, if you can find one to fit me, I'll wear one next year." On May fifth, I had the opportunity to attend a Community Shield Event in San Mateo. This was put on for fifty observers to find out what it is that our police, fire, and EMTs do in various situations, which was impressive to me, was scenario, it was scenario-based. They had a bus where you had this expected terrorist light off a bomb, and, uh, spray some substance, and we all had to put on eyes and ears, ear protectors and eye, eye protectors. I was impressed to see the use of drones as how they're being used in public safety, and the new equipment that they have is bulletproof, uh, armored ambulances to show up on the scene. I could see Christine in the audience, uh, being an EMT, she's kind of smiling and saying, "Oh, yeah, that's new stuff." But anyway, it was a pleasure to attend that. On the fourth of May, I attended the Bay Shore, Ms. Rizzi has left already, but the Bay Shore, uh, Senior, uh, Friendship Seniors Meeting, which, uh, oh, she's here? Hello, Ms. Rizzi, I'm just making mention about attending the meeting at the, uh, Senior Friendships. And, uh, it's a very nice group, and it's always good to see them and address some of their concerns, and let them know some information that was happening in the area, and, uh, also as Ms. D. Giovanni said earlier, about the response to fire to different addresses. And there were a few other citizen concerns. Thank you so much. All right, uh, Vice Mayor Manalo and I, Heroes Breakfast. Out of all the honorees there, there are a few that I, two of them, which I want to make mention, and that is a young lady who has gone through various bouts of suicide, and she contemplated suicide on many occasions, and being part of the Y, she obtained an award, and she's well on her way. And I'd like to give kudos to Supervisor Carol Groom for also being recognized as one of the community heroes. Sephora's grand opening in J.C. Penney, they increased their size double-fold to twenty-four hundred square feet. I heard a term out there, they have twenty-one thousand units. Whatever that means in the sense of makeup, I don't know, but I learned a lot, and I see that, uh, folks go through a lot to look good, and I'm happy that Sephora is there. Another area of mention is for the past two weekends, the Daly City Public Library Associates had a book event at, um, two-eighty Metro Center. I went every day, except for past Sunday, and I have earned the nickname "Frequent Flyer." I, uh, definitely support, uh, DCPLA. I'd like to thank all of the volunteers, and also the trustees of the Library Commission, for coming out and spending all their hours. I believe Vice Mayor, uh, Manalo was also out there. So, that's all I have for activities. But since, now, I'd like to, uh, speak about, um, council comments, and I'd like to make a few comments at this time. In two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, the grand jury convened and wrote a report regarding the twenty cities of San Mateo to, uh, in regards to SFO jet noise. Daly City is the biggest, uh, population within San Mateo County, and to which every city had to produce a response to the grand jury report. I have read our city's report, and after seven years, things have changed, and being that I'm a member of this SFO Roundtable, I am representing Daly City, and based upon the recommendation that was made in two thousand ten, I am now going to request to put together a committee, a Citizens Advisory Committee on Jet Noise, to work with the representative of the SFO Roundtable, so that we will make sure, and the representative to make sure that we continue to have a voice. I've also asked on a couple of questions for a follow-up on a Student Advisory Committee. For the next agenda, for next month, I am requesting the following. I'm requesting a discussion on the HART Program, which is the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust. This is a program to enable first-time homebuyers to, uh, purchase a home. I am requesting at the next council meeting, an update on the SAFER Grant to, uh, bring in more firefighters. It's been a while since we've applied, and I would like to have an update on that matter. As per the previous council meeting that we've had, we agreed that we're going to move forward with a street fair in our city. I'd like to task, or to send notice, to both the Arts and Culture Commissions and the Recreation Commissions to get together, and we all get together, and collaborate and find ways to put this, uh, street fair on. I'm also, I also received a request about internships here in Daly City. I would like to find out more information about internships. We have kids who attend college, and they have certain specialties, and would like to intern with the city. I would like to find out what we do here in Daly City. Uh, maybe we can provide matching funds, or get folks to donate, but to help Daly City, and to get some of these interns here at our various departments, such as Economic Development Unit. I do understand we have basically interns like PAL cadets in the Police Department, but all throughout the city. And who knows, maybe some of these young adults will become future employees of the city. Tonight, you know that we received, or we provide a proclamations for American, Asian, Pacific Islanders Together. I would like to help celebrate this month by putting on Daly City's website and, an ad, or advertisement showing their upcoming event here in Daly City coming up. And, one last one. I've been a member of a committee to which we are, uh, trying to increase the infrastructure and prepare the infrastructure for the future, for our younger generations and businesses to come in this city. I'm concerned about the financial costs involved, but that would be brought before all of the council as we move forward. The whole idea is to increase and provide fiber connectivity throughout twenty-two cities throughout San Mateo, where we can have high-speed internet access, it's good for our schools. I hope to have free Wi-Fi throughout Daly City, but we have to find out what this is going to cost. So, I just wanted to let folks know that I'm working on it. Now, I'm working with a few folks and, and a few city councils, and, matter of fact, they will be tr, traveling to Dave, um, Washington, DC. And I have a letter here that I'll gladly share with my council members. I would like to send a letter in support of federal advocacy to get grant funds to help provide funding for internet fiber in our community. This letter does not cost, or there's no impact to Daly City at all, but, uh, if we can, if I can get that letter, I, I would request your support. I have a I and a we. I'd be more than happy to send it as the I, but I prefer it to be the we. So, with that being said, that's all I have. So, thank you so much.
Can we, um, can we just indicate now, if we support this letter, we can just send the letter?
Well, uh, thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura. I mean, uh, I, I'd like to give everybody a chance to read it, and I just got this today, and I'd like to share it, but I would appreciate, uh, some... but I would appreciate support. And, uh...
So what do you want me to do with this? To hand it to Pat or to read it now?
Well, you can, you can hand it to Ms. Martel. And then, matter of fact, I do have...
Email it to us.
Yes. All right. I'll make this very quick. I'll read the letter so everybody's on page. Sample letter of endorsement for federal advocacy of shared fiber, public Wi-Fi. "I, we, support San Mateo County's efforts to expand connectivity throughout the region by bringing high-speed fiber and free Wi-Fi to public spaces in 20 cities and unincorporated areas within the county, specifically San Mateo. SMC is taking a regional approach by repurposing old existing networks within cities that were built during the cable franchise area and retooling them to high-speed broadband fiber. This solution can be realized at a much lower cost due to the reliance on upgrading existing conduits, which would eliminate expensive, unnecessary ground trenching. This would provide the county and cities the ability to collaborate around a shared government fiber network, enabling the foundation for smart technology frameworks, increasing public access to high-speed internet and enormous economic development opportunities. This network would also be the technical backbone for providing free Wi-Fi to recreation centers, public plazas, parks, affordable housing communities, and as well, strategic areas around schools and libraries where the service is needed. In closing, we support any opportunity to apply for federal grants or enter in any public-private partnerships available to help our region become more connected." So these folks are going to Washington, DC, and we have four lobbyists consisting of senators who will be getting this letter.
Well, I, I don't know about the rest of the council, but I, I support signing on to the letter.
Thank you. And I would really appreciate that. And I think the sooner we can get this letter out, I know we can't make a decision right away, but to know, to have the support, I'm willing to move forward. Thank you, Councilmember Christensen.
And support as well.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That's all I have. Any further comments this evening?
Yes.
Madam Christensen.
Mayor Sylvester, I did read in the minutes at the last meeting that you were talking about hiring a parliamentarian to enforce Robert's Rules of Order and that that seemed to be of a major concern to you. The council has no authority to hire employees other than the city manager and the city attorney. But even beyond that, if you think a parliamentarian will prevent me from talking, especially about explaining my vote, he or she better come with a bazooka because I actually answer to a higher set of rules than Robert's. And that rule is that the, the residents and the voters of Daly City absolutely deserve to be fully informed about why I'm voting the way I am. And when they don't want to hear from me anymore, and they will stop coming up to me in the grocery store and saying, "Thank you for explaining." And the next time I run, they'll vote me out of office. So you don't need a parliamentarian. The voters will take care of it when they're sick of listening to me. Until then, I'm just being straight-up honest, and I've been this way with you before. When I vote, if I choose to say two or three sentences about that vote, I will do it. And you can bang that gavel, like I said before, until the cows come home. I'm going to continue talking. That's the way it's always been on this council. It's a promise to the community about transparency and about fully informing them and making sure they truly understand why we're voting the way we're voting. And I understand you have a passion for the rules, but banging that gavel is not gonna stop me. And I want to say thank you that you did not bang the gavel on me tonight. I greatly appreciate that. So instead of expecting me to bow down to the gavel, trust me, it's not gonna happen. So with that, I say we can, we don't need to worry about the parliamentarian. The voters will take care of me if I'm doing them a disservice. And thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen. And I invite everyone else in the audience to review the tapes. It's there. And the whole issue that we have here on this council is, I've said it before and I will say it again, is lack of decorum and respect for one another. So hopefully, we can work on this. I thank everyone for their comments. All right. With that being said, I'd like to move on and adjourn this meeting in memory of the following. I'll first start off speaking to, towards our firefighters who we acknowledged this evening. But there's also another area that we've forgotten, and that is our California police officers. The California Peace Officers Memorial this week will be honoring